Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the school committee meeting. There'll be two parts of the meeting tonight. We'll start off in the usual school committee format. But at 7:15, we're going to move to the budget hearing, which is legally required under the state of Massachusetts. So with that, the first order of business is normally our student representative, and she's not here tonight. But she did ask me to pass on her report, and so I will. And so she said, Middleborough High School wanted to congratulate all winter sports team for an amazing season. Congrats to the girls swim team, as they were named, social league champions for the first time. And congratulations to both the girls basketball and boys hockey team for making it to the league championship. Middleborough High School is taking part in the annual Polar Plunge in support of the Special Olympics. Students who register are to raise money in support. Students can sign up at polarplungemass.org. The National Honor Society is hosting a hat, mitten, and sock drive. Each donation will count as a community service hour, and donations will be accepted until March 8th. For the 2022, the class of 2022, there'll be an SAT exam held during the school day on Tuesday, April 13th. Info to register can be found in your emails from the guidance department. For the class of 2021, a reminder that the deadline for all scholarships is March 12th, 2021. Parent teachers conference will be held Wednesday, March 10th, from 5:30 to 7:30. A signup genius will be used to book all appointments. The signups will begin the week of March 1st. The high school National Honor Society continues to offer tutors to anyone in need of extra help in any subject. Fill out the Google form that can be found in Brannigan's Bulletin or reach out to Eileen Petty or Mrs. Glebe. I should point out that that's where Natalia is today. She's tutoring a student. And the update for CPAC, in honor of World Autism Awareness Day, CPAC is hosting an Easter Bunny Paint Night on Friday, April 2nd. Tickets are $10, and this price includes supplies that are to be picked up on March 30th. Registration is now open until March 24th, and registration can be found at bunny.mcpac.org. And so that's Natalia's report. Does any member of the committee have anything that they wish to share? Mr. Oakley, go right ahead.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to report back to the committee and also to the public how really incredible the budget process was for me as someone that's new to the budget process and just how enlightening it is about all the things that go on in the school district. And just a huge shout out to Superintendent Lynch and to Sarah Hickey for all the work that they do, because certainly Meg and I asked a million questions, and they always had the answers. So I just, for anyone that's ever considering running for a local board, I don't know how the rest of them work, but I would say dig into the budget as quickly as you can, because it is such an awesome way to learn. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oakley. Anybody else have anything they wish to bring up? I know in the second half hour meeting, we have a superintendent's report, and I just want to bring up one piece, and that's about the commissioners' discussion two days ago. And that is that the commissioner announced, and along with the governor, that there would be a plan to move students, especially in the younger grades, back to full time. I think the problem that I have more than anything else is currently there's no plan. Thus, the commissioner has not presented a plan. I watched the Mass, the National Board of Education meeting, in which he outlined that a plan would be coming next month. So when they go in front of people and start the conversation, it's annoying as it has been all along that they are announcing things and not providing details to anybody to look at and try to process how this is happening. I know the superintendent's going to talk later, because as for the past couple of meetings, the administration has been working on bringing back some of the younger children and trying to figure out how to do that. But I find it especially annoying when leadership consistently makes declarations without ever having anything to back it up. And it's happened time after time after time in this time period with COVID. And it just reaches a point where it gets annoying. So I just want to say that, because I think it's important. And a lot of people read the headlines and think this is a definite plan. We haven't seen anything that they're offering or any ideas that they're presenting. And so that's the frustrating part, sitting on as a member of the school committee. As I know, you all feel the same way, because I've heard bits and pieces from everyone. So I just wanted to just raise that piece. Brian, did you have anything you wanted to say about that particular piece?
Yeah, I sort of would reiterate what you said. Normally, the commissioner would sort of sit with the council of superintendents and meet with the superintendents and sort of talk about the plan moving forward. Not that this was out of the blue, but this was an instance where this was announced before, without any forewarning for superintendents or central office administration. So that was one thing that sort of was a little bit different with this announcement in this field. I think it was consistent with the governor's position, which is consistent with the president's position, that they want kids back in school, and the president says within his first 100 days. The governor certainly supports that. The commissioner certainly supports that. He works for the governor. And so, you know, his idea is to go to the Board of Education in March and to get permission to sort of change the rules when it comes to student learning time and a few other things. The first sort of release on this was the fact that the transportation, as we talked about a little bit at last meeting, the capacity limitations and physical distancing on buses basically were changed. The ones at the elementary were lifted. The ones at the middle school, even in a community that's a red community, which we continue to be, that basically allows for two students per bench at the middle and high school students. So with that lifted, that really put our administration sort of to work much more seriously in terms of putting together some solid plans. And now this is going to sort of give us more of a timeline, time date on what the governor's expectations and the commissioner's expectations are moving forward. Like you said, and we have as a group of administrators, been sitting and brainstorming and working through and developing plans to see if we could do this. Obviously, the social distancing is, you know, for students is three feet in our district. For teachers, in the front of the classrooms, they have six feet, and we have an MOA. And obviously, that has to be revisited, but there are a lot of considerations moving forward. And we'll continue to look at all of those considerations in making our decisions. You know, the question that has come up and will come up is, how come all of a sudden we can fit students in and we can make it happen? Well, when you can transport students, that's one thing. And the second piece is, we have to use every single bit of open space. We may be having lunch on stages. We may be having, we'll definitely be having lunches and gymnasiums. We're going to lose those large spaces. We may be having lunches and auditoriums, which normally there's no food or drink in auditoriums. But wherever we can fit students, we will. So that's part of a larger plan to try to get our students back in. We also have to find out through community surveys and what exactly folks want to do. Because in the same breath, he said, "We want everybody back." He also stated that remote learning should still be an option for parents. So that is, it really complicates things moving forward. I know people have a lot of opinions on this. I know there's a lot. But we're trying to take everything and every person and every constituency and all of their individual interests. Vaccination is obviously an issue in terms of faculty. We have faculty, as you know, who have been in all year and who started day one. Unified arts and special needs folks and folks like that that are in the schools every single day teaching kids. We have not had any outbreaks, and it's been a positive so far. So the fact that we can, if we can fit all the students in, and the governor says and the commissioner says that, you know, at the beginning of April, we want as many students as we possibly can get in in school, then we were going to work on in Middleborough area, we've been focusing on the Middleborough Public Schools, excuse me. We've been focusing on that K-8 population with the realization at the high school, under its current setup, would be much, much more difficult to get students in for the beginning of April. And moving forward, if and when we move into the new high school, and hopefully that's a when, in April, the end of April, that would free up some space. As you know, the interior classrooms at the high school are not available. So that's an impossibility for, to start in April at the high school. So there are obviously a lot of considerations that we can probably talk about a little bit later, too, with a larger committee. I know that we are on a time span here for a 7:15 budget hearing pursuant to Mass General Act, Chapter 71, Section 38, and so that should be started on time. So I can certainly take a question, too, now, or we can move on.
Anyone have a question for the superintendent, and then we'll probably be able to take one question and then move on. Teresa, go right ahead.
Thanks, Brian. I was just curious, as far as these surveys, is there, I mean, I would imagine those are in the works, but should people sort of expect them in the next couple of weeks, or are you...
Definitely in the next couple of weeks, Teresa. We were definitely putting them together. They've been vetted through the administrative staff. We're going back and forth with that. We're trying to determine if we're going to get sort of an interest survey and then a secondary survey, which would collect actual data, or if we want to do it all at once. And that's right where we're at with the administrative team, saying, do we want to at one point say, listen, we need your commitment? So what we do want, parents out there, to be thinking about this. And like I said, I know there are a lot of opinions on this, and there's a lot of discussion on this. But I want parents to really seriously be thinking about what they're willing to commit to for the rest of the year. If they want to commit to their child coming back full time, we suspect the majority of folks will. But there are also folks that have committed to the remote learning, and they may be more apt to keep their kids out of school under these when we put more kids in school. Even those kids in hybrid right now are in school, and there's really only less than half the population. So now you take the entire population, you double the population we have in our hybrid schools now, and that for social distancing certainly doesn't improve social distancing in at least a little bit. But what the data is saying and what the evidence is saying and what the commissioner and the governor are saying is that their medical experts say, excuse me, there has been no significant COVID spread in schools, and that it's so far, it has worked out. So we're willing to move on because of the value of having kids in school five days a week.
Thank you.
And I would say as an administrative team, in closing that out, sort of this section, they're fully supportive, to an end. Every single administrator realizes the value of getting more of our students in school. I would say the majority of our teachers excited about getting the possibility of having that. You know, under certain conditions, there's no doubt about it. And those are, those are things that we have to discuss. The school committee and the Teachers Association, Middleborough Education Association have to discuss. It's incumbent upon us to do that. And I informed the Association of Sam and Kate last night, the co-presidents, that this is not, this is not a rumor per se. This is something that has been announced by the governor and the commissioner, and is something that we have to plan for. We have to plan for. So we move forward with the planning process, taking everything into consideration and brainstorming as a group of administrators, and certainly involving the input from faculty in terms of what their thoughts are moving forward. But like I said, the reality is, if the governor puts an order together and the commissioner of the Board of Education says your students have to come back, our students have to come back. So.
So with that, Brian, I'm going to take a break and suspend the current school committee meeting. And I will open up the budget hearing for next fiscal year. Just so everyone knows, in accordance with the law, we have posted the budget hearing notice in the Middleborough Gazette. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Meg and Rich, because they serve as the budget committee, subcommittee. I want to thank them for their time and their efforts, and I'll let you guys proceed from there. So thank you.
Mr. Chair, Meg, do you want to take us away? My first time, so I'm learning from you.
So I'm learning, too, because I've never been on the, I wasn't really on the budget committee last year. I kind of was. So I'm going to just give it to Sarah to present what she's going to present to you guys.
Thank you so much. I'm going to pull up a spreadsheet for you. I'm sorry, a slideshow for you. So this is, well, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. This is the first time I've been in a meeting where I can't see people. I can only see the slideshow. So this is the Middleborough Public Schools Fiscal Year 2022 Budget, which is a request going to the school committee for tonight. And in my presentation, I'm going to talk about the fiscal year 22 budget drivers. I have a graph of per pupil expenditures that I'd like to talk about. I have a graph for net school spending comparisons that I'd like to talk about. And then I've taken our budget number, and I've divided it up in several different ways. I've divided it up into salaries and expenses, and then expenses by cost center. I've put together a budget comparison, going over, a longitudinal comparison, going over time from the 2018 budget to the 2022 budget. And then I'm going to present the complete FY22 operational budget plan, which will include a summary of the total costs from all our funding sources. And I'll end with a recommended motion for the school committee, should you wish to accept this budget as presented. Because of the nature of StreamYard, I know in past years, I've gone through slides, and I've stopped at the end of each slide and asked questions, if there were any questions. But the way StreamYard works, I'm going to go through all of the slides, and then when I'm done, we'll have an opportunity for questions. So thank you for your patience in that. So we have a number of budget drivers. The first one that we always have to keep in mind is the Middleborough Public Schools Strategy for Continuous District Improvement. We work to have a culture of innovation and achievement, a culture of excellence, and a culture of well-being in the Middleborough Public Schools. And so that is something that we keep in mind when we're making requests and forming the budget. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has requirements for us that, you know, we're legally required to meet. So we have to keep those in mind as well as the, as the budget is being formed. We're in the business of teaching, learning, and assessment. So we have to examine how to allocate funds to best support teaching and learning and assessment. We provide transportation for all students that we're required by law to provide transportation for. And so that is something that's considered in our budget. And then we're also required to provide special education, tuition, and services. So these are the things that every single year we need to focus on before the budget gets presented to you. This is what's always in the back of our minds as the budget is being put together. But it's also in the back of our minds every single day of the year, because this is, this is what we do in the business office, is consider all of these things all of the time. This first graph that I have for you is the fiscal year 2019 per pupil expenditure comparisons. So what I did for this graph is I went in, 2019 is the most recent year that the Department of Education has all the data for all the schools in the state. And what I did was I went in and I took all of the data for all of the schools of the state, in the state, and I created this histogram. If you look across the bottom at the, they call them bins with a histogram. If you look at the categories for the bars, there's this group here of schools that spend less than $14,000 per... Thank you, Sean. Sean came in and helped me with that. Sorry. I didn't know that was visible. There's this group of schools here that spends less than $14,000 per year on students per pupil. There's this large group of schools that spend between $14,000 and $18,000. And then over here on the right-hand side, we have some, some schools that spend an extraordinary amount of money per pupil. And what I want to say about these schools is that data is skewed by having a small population. If you, if you have 37 students that go to your school, and you have to have eight teachers, the cost is going to be off in your per pupil expenditures. So these towns over here are places like Province Town, where their total school population is very small, but they still have to provide all of the subjects for the students. In this per pupil expenditure comparison for 2019, Middleborough's per pupil expenditure was $15,325, and the state average was $17,150. In my next slide, I took the data for the FY20 net school spending, and it was the budget as a percent of required. So every year, the State Department of Education gives us a required amount of money that must be spent on our schools. And then you can see over here, if the state says we have to spend a certain amount of money, and we spend exactly that, then we have met, we've spent, I'm sorry, we've budgeted 100% of what's required. So if you look over here on the left, you can see that there are a few schools in the state that when they budgeted for fiscal year 20, they budgeted less than what they were required to budget. And then you have a large group of schools here in the middle that have budgeted between 100%, which is exactly what they're required to budget, and 160% of what they're required. And then again, it tails off to the right, and we have some schools over here on the right-hand side that, again, are small districts, Row Mass and Truro Mass and Province Town, again, where the percent that they budget is skewed by the small population. But this group over here had budgeted in FY20 more than 300% of what was required for them to spend. So Middleborough here has budgeted for FY20. We budgeted 118.8%, so we budgeted over what we were required to have for net school spending. And the state average for fiscal year 20 was 126.1%. My next slide takes our budgeted amount that was given to us by town manager Bob Noons, $34,894,643, and it divides it up into what I like to refer to as salaries and expenses. So this is a comparison of our FY21 budget and our FY22 budget. I put it in a circle graph to make it easy to look at. And in both of these graphs, the large black portion, the piece of the pie of the circle graph, that is salaries. And then everything else are our expenses. Our expenses are divided up into tuitions, utilities, supplies and materials, contracted services, and other expenses. So you can see that from year to year, there's not a dramatic difference. If I had a slide that had FY20 and FY19 on it, you would see there's not a dramatic difference in what we're doing. The bulk of the money that we budget every year does go to salaries. My next slide, I took the $34,894,643, and I divided it up by cost center. So the different cost centers that we have are the district administration and undistributed. We have our special ed department, the technology department, and then Middleborough High School, Nichols Middle School, the Berklin School, MKG, the Mary Kay Good School, and Memorial Early Childhood Center. And you can see from year to year, the percentages here are fairly consistent as well. What I will tell you about the technology budget is, yes, the technology budget is 3% when you look at just the technology line items. But there are line items within the Middleborough High School and Nichols Middle School and all the other schools where the tech, that are technology lines. So if we were to buy laptops for the ninth grade class next year, that money would show up under the Middleborough High School piece of the pie in the circle graph, not under the technology budget. So please don't think that because the technology piece of the pie is 3% that that's all we spend. We're required by the Department of Education to report things under the school or building that they are allocated to. And so laptops for the high school are technology, but would show up within the Middleborough High School budget. This is a more complicated slide. The Department of Education has a chart of accounts. The chart of accounts divides up all of the monies spent by a school district into different categories. There are certain categories that we don't use here in Middleborough. But what we do use are what are called the 1,000 accounts, which are administration, the 2,000 accounts, which is instruction, 3,000 accounts, which are school services, our 4,000 accounts, which are operations and maintenance, the 5,000 accounts, which is benefits, 7,000 accounts, equipment replacement, and our 9,000 accounts, which are tuitions. So if you take a look at the far right-hand column, we had an increase in all of those different cost centers from the Department of Ed, an increase in all of those except for our benefits. We're leaving level funded at $100,000. That benefit line is for retirements. Down here at the bottom, in a separate, in a separate portion of the budget, the transportation department is budgeted to have $3,561,800 for next year. And the difference here, again, is an increase of $221,066. So an overall look at our operational budget plan of, again, salaries and expenses. We propose $28,824,986 to be spent on salaries for next year, $1,413,840 on contractual, contracted services, $887,189 on supplies and materials, $282,370 on other expenses. I lost a comma in this next number, but it's $1,090,893. And then $2,395,365 in tuitions. So this total number comes out to $34,894,643, which matches exactly the number that town manager Bob Noons gave us as an appropriation for the year. Our transportation budget is broken down into several categories. We have a contract with First Student. They do all of our regular educational transportation. So our transportation budget is $2310,000 for payment to First Student next year. We drive students to vocational schools. That's going to be $35,300 for next year. Minibus salaries, $680,000, and minibus expenses are $200,500. Our crossing guard expenses are budgeted at $46,000. We have some special ed contracted services. At times, there are students that we are unable to transport. I've budgeted $100,000 for that. The McKinney-Vento Act requires us to transport homeless students. I've budgeted $120,000 for that for next year. And we're also required to provide transportation to foster care students. And that is budgeted at $70,000 for a total transportation budget of $3,561,800 for fiscal year 22. of three million five hundred sixty-one thousand eight hundred dollars for fiscal year twenty-two. The summary overall, our operating budget is thirty-four million eight hundred ninety-four thousand six hundred forty-three dollars. As I presented to you earlier, the transportation budget is three million five hundred sixty-one thousand dollars, eight hundred dollars. In addition to those, we will be using seven hundred nine thousand seventy dollars from the Circuit Breaker Special Ed reimbursement fund and two million two hundred thirteen thousand ninety-one dollars from our revolving accounts and grant funding in order to pay all of our expenses for next year for a total of forty-one million three hundred seventy-six thousand six hundred and four dollars. So the recommended motion for the FY twenty-one, FY twenty-two budget is as follows. It would be to move that the Middleborough School Committee approve thirty-eight million four hundred fifty-six thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars as the fiscal twenty-twenty-two local education budget. And such appropriation includes thirty-four million eight hundred ninety-four thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars in the operating budget and three million five hundred sixty-one thousand eight hundred dollars in the transportation budget. And further that the total appropriation of thirty-eight million four hundred fifty-six thousand four hundred forty-three dollars is in compliance with Education Reform Act of nineteen ninety-three and recommended by the superintendent of schools. And further that the school committee direct the superintendent to allocate the following additional funding sources, which total two million nine hundred twenty-two thousand one hundred sixty-one dollars. The FY, I apologize, I should say twenty-two, the FY twenty-two estimated Circuit Breaker Special Ed reimbursement of seven hundred nine thousand seventy dollars and revolving account and grant funding totaling two million two hundred thirteen thousand ninety-one dollars for a final approved expenditures for the schools of forty-one million three hundred seventy-six thousand six hundred and four dollars.
So moved?
Chris, I'm gonna stop there. We're not gonna take a motion yet. I'm gonna give people an opportunity to discuss the budget first before we take a motion. So with that, does any member have anything? Teresa, go right ahead.
Yeah, I have a, um, a couple of questions. Um, I'm, I'm always encouraged by the fact that we increase, increase our budget every year and I was on finance committee for a little bit. So I've always, uh, kinda kept an eye on that budget and I love that we do that. But I'm curious to know where we are below the state average. Um, what is, is there a plan, Brian, with the town manager to, I mean, obviously we're, we're, we're setting increases, but is there a plan to try to get us even closer to that state average or is this just, we're doing the best we can? I just, I'm kinda curious about that. I've always been.
Teresa, uh, thank you for your question and, and good evening, uh, to you and to the rest of the committee, uh, again. I would say that, uh, we try to live within the balanced budget parameters provided for us in this town. Um, and we've been able to do that uh, with additional monies coming in from such places as school choice and things such as that. So, um, there are some optional things that we do. Uh, we do some facility rentals that helps out with our facilities budget. Uh, so there are some things that we do outside of the operational budget that help us bring our number up considerably. So we're, we're able to do that. Our, our Title I grants and our Title IV grants and our Title II A grants are, are up. And, and that's, that helps out with salaries and such, uh, when other communities sometimes are, are, are not as, not, uh, as they don't get as much money as we do, basically, is what it comes down to.
Absolutely.
So there are some things that offset that, but in terms of bringing that up, um, you know, the, the, the town manager has repeated that, that he's very proud that, that the town is able to support, uh, at the level we do, uh, current level we do. And, uh, we've been able to, uh, basically make do, uh, under this balanced budget parameter that's provided with the town because it's very clear to us, uh, and that the, that the town manager has a plan, uh, for this town moving forward and to make sure that we're able to, uh, afford everything in town. So, so that, but there's no plan to, to really sort of push that envelope. If, if that were the case, we would sit down in this group and if it ever became the case, and it has happened in the past, where we, the school committee doesn't feel we have enough money to operate. Um, and then we will push for more money or perhaps an override. Um, but that's, that has not been the case since I've been here. Um, and, and working closely with Bob Noons and, and the school committees in the past, uh, we've been able to, and finance committees in the past, we've been able to make do with, with what we're provided by the town.
Thank you. And I, I just had one more question. Um, I'm guessing, I just, I noticed on one of the slides that the operations and maintenance, um, money went down one year and then kind of jumped kind of big this year. So does that have to do with the new high school and maintenance on that piece? And just, I wa- I was just curious why there was such a large jump there.
I have an explanation for you.
For, perfect.
What, during the FY twenty-one budget process, we were faced with the challenges of, um, uh, in a dramatic increase in the number of out-of-district placements and students and our special ed, uh, expenditures increased about two million dollars. And in order to, um, in order to compensate for that, the we took the salaries for the maintenance department and moved them into the, um, facility rental revolving account for this fiscal year. The, so that's the dip that you saw. It went down and then it came back up because we can't leave them in the facility rental account con- continuing because we haven't, well, we need to build up money in that account in order to do expensive repairs. But also we haven't really been bringing in, um, all of, you know, the basketball rentals of the gymnasium. So it, it would be unhealthy for us fiscally to leave them in there. So they were put in there in order to get the budget last year at, as a balanced number. But they were pulled back out this year in order, uh, just to be fiscally responsible.
Okay. Thank you so much. That, that's great.
Rich, is your question for me?
Mr. Oakley, go ahead.
Um, yes, it is. And it's, uh, I think it's a appropriate piggyback off of Teresa's question about, um, you know, getting up to that one twenty-five number. And it, it's, um, I think there's probably a whole nother crowd in town that's thinking like, well, why isn't that, it at the one hundred number? You know, why are we spending more than we have to? Of course, I'm not one of those people. Um, because after seeing all of what goes into the sausage, I think it's, it's a very nice sausage. And, uh, I wouldn't suggest that we do anything different with it. But Sarah, I wanted, I'm sure there's folks watching at home saying like, why are we paying more than we have to? My taxes are high enough already. And I, I'd, I'd like to just seed you with that question so that maybe you can speak a little bit to that, or maybe Brian can speak a little bit to, to why we are spending over the hundred.
I believe that the, um, the required net school spending gets you a bare bones, bare minimum. This is what the state says. This is the lowest amount of money that you can use in order to provide an adequate education. I really believe that what we're providing here in Middleborough is better than an adequate education. There are a lot of things that this district offers that would not be, uh, available to students if we were only funded right at that net school spending amount. I mean, we, we have programs throughout the district that if you look in other districts, they just don't exist.
Thank you. Couldn't agree more.
Other questions? All right, while we're waiting, I have a couple. Um, Sarah, can you talk a little about, uh, the new high school and additions to the high school budget for the new high school?
Yes. The, um, additions to the new high school, uh, additions to the budget because of the new high school are, are varied. So for example, there's a kiln. I saw it on Sunday. It's a beautiful piece of equipment for the art room. And when you have a kiln, you need to purchase, um, clay. So there are supplies that are being purchased for next year for programs that didn't exist this year. So we didn't have, uh, we didn't have clay in the budget last year or the year before because there wasn't a kiln in the art room. Um, the other thing that you probably, people probably don't think about with the addition of the new high school, the bringing on board the new high school is things like the electricity bill. We know the electricity bill is going to go up, even though the, the building itself is very energy efficient. The, the nature of everything that has gone into the building though is very electronic. And so even though the lighting and all of the, the, um, all of the, the things that have gone into the high school are very efficient, there's just more of everything. Does that, did I cover all of your question?
Um, no, I just wa- also wanted to mention that, and this has been an ongoing conversation since we put in the new high school. There'll be additional positions for the new high school, correct?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. So this budget includes, um, the, this budget includes the salary for the position of the person who's going to work at the maker space in the high school. And it also includes the, um, a full-time groundskeeper for the district. There's quite a bit of land at the high school that needs to be cared for. And the playing fields are beautiful and need to be taken care of. They'll need marking for games. And, and it's advantageous for us to have our own groundskeeper on staff in order to keep the buildings, uh, I'm sorry, keep the grounds looking as excellent as they do.
Thank you, Sarah. Um, before I ask any other questions or make any other comments, um, does anyone else have anything? I know there's a couple in the chat and we'll address those, um, shortly. Um, Sarah, the only, uh, my only concern, having looked at the budget and just so people know with what Sarah presents, Sarah also puts together this very lovely book, um, that covers everything and I'm, I'm thankful for that. I would say my only concern with the budget currently, Sarah, is the school committee legal fees. Um, I know you increased it, um, um, somewhat, but I would think we might want to increase it a little more primarily because we do have contractual, contracts ending. Um, that twenty-twenty-two fiscal year, we generally start the contracts anywhere from January through June, depending upon what's going on and given, w- we know there's some issues coming up that will probably require, um, more legal fees, including the bus contract too, which we'll have to redo.
Yes.
So I just would like to maybe look at that a little more and, and go from that piece. But, um, other than that, I mean, most of it makes sense to me and as usual, it, uh, it seems reasonable.
If, so the, the Circuit Breaker reimbursement that I put in, the seven hundred nine thousand, I don't have it in front of me right now, but it, seven hundred nine thousand seventy dollars approximately. Um, that number was, uh, a low estimate. Our Circuit Breaker reimbursement for this current year was around nine hundred thousand. So the legal fees that you're talking about, I will, I can add that in and pretty much count on the fact that Circuit Breaker for tuitions will cover that.
Okay, that's great. I think that would be helpful and just making sure that that, that, that was the only thing that raised to me, Sarah, given in the past. The last time we didn't use as much, but I think the superintendent, um, the last time we did contract negotiations, our attorney was ill and couldn't attend contract negotiations. And so the superintendent and town manager and I did the vast majority of contract negotiations at that time. So, um, that was the reason the budget, that, that piece went down from the past. So that may go, you know, like I said, it may go up, but I appreciate that. Um, any other questions before I'm gonna ask the two that were in the chat? If, uh, Mr. Oakley, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I got a little tongue-tied when you turned it over to us in, in the beginning. Uh, but there was just a, a quick little thing that I wanted to say, um, to the members of this committee and also to the, the, uh, public here in Middleborough, which was, um, uh, obviously it was a, uh, a difficult process. And I think, uh, a lot of difficult decisions needed to be made. Um, but I think I'm really proud, um, and, and Meg, I, I'm sure you agree, that we were able to maintain, uh, you know, what, what we have going on there and to add in some additional stuff, um, for, for the new high school and, uh, not, uh, cut anything. Um, and I think we did the best that we possibly could, or not, not that we didn't cut anything, but that we weren't cutting salaries. And so, uh, I think that Meg and I and, um, to a larger degree, Brian and Sarah, did everything we possibly could to balance this budget out of fairness to the taxpayers, um, but also to maximize the educational experience. So, um, it certainly wasn't easy. I don't wanna make it sound like that. Um, a lot of difficult decisions. But, um, I, I hope that, uh, you all appreciate, uh, you know, trying to maximize the educational opportunities while not uh, making cuts elsewhere. So, um, thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Thanks. And I, I think the important thing too, Rich, is why you're not necessarily making cuts or making decisions. Um, there are a lot of requests that come through at budget time and, and we asked the, the principals in each building and the heads of each departments to, um, prioritize their requests so you could see what they'd like to do. Um, and a lot of times that like-to-do doesn't jive with the money that we have. And we have to pick and choose and, and look around. So I appreciate, I know how hard that process is. And, uh, having gone through it with, uh, Sarah and Brian before and all the administrators, and I appreciate the uh, difficulty is to sort of make those decisions and present them here tonight. So I wanna thank you guys for doing that. Other questions? So I'm gonna ask the two that are in the chat. Um, Sarah, in the, in the pie charts that you showed, the, um, there was a decrease in special ed from FY twenty-one to twenty-two. Does that reflect a reduction in expenditures or just a smaller piece of the pie?
Uh, just a, a smaller piece of the pie. There was actually an increase of about one point two million dollars in expenditures out of the oper- that was also the operating budget. Keep in mind that there are special education expenditures that are paid by the Circuit Breaker, um, revolving account and also by the IDEA, um, grant. So that, so the piece of the pie, look, it's smaller. It went from, I think, ten percent to nine percent. It went down one percent. But that just doesn't reflect in a decrease in funding for special education. There was actually a one point two million dollar increase from last year to this year. And then in addition to that one point two million, there's also the Circuit Breaker money and grant funding that goes just to special education.
Thank you, Sarah. Uh, and the other question was, there was a question about, um, can we add deaf or hard of hearing teachers to the school system along with an American Sign Language curriculum from kindergarten to twelfth grade? Has that been thought about, Brian? I, I guess I'll turn that over to you because.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. That, that is a, it's an excellent point, uh, but we do belong to a collaborative and one of the coll- we belong to, uh, Reed's Collaborative. Uh, and part of Reed's Collaborative is, uh, an effort to bring a number of school systems with very small populations of different students together and, and combine our resources to, uh, put programs together for, uh, different, uh, students uh, with different disabilities. Uh, our deaf and hard of hearing program is run by, basically by Reed's Collaborative. We have consultants that work with us, uh, through them. Uh, and, uh, but our populations attend schools, uh, at this point, I believe in Norton. Or if they go to Bristol Plymouth, there's also a deaf and hard of hearing program at Bristol Plymouth. So our students were transported to Norton at the elementary, middle and high school level. It's a collaborative program that saves us a great deal of money, um, um, instead of employing a, a full-time teacher uh, for maybe one teacher, one student or two students. Um, as far as the ASL curriculum goes, uh, that's not something I don't believe we've looked at. I can certainly, certainly speak with Carolyn Lyons about that, our PPS director, to see where, where we are with that. I know we offer some instruction. Reed's Collaborative does offer instruction for faculty, uh, after school. And, uh, but I can't really speak to the specific question about a, a curriculum with ASL. Um, but, uh, but as far as our deaf and hard of hearing, we do, uh, we are involved in Reed's Collaborative for those purposes.
Thank you, Brian. Um, the other question that, I, I would just remind people that if they wish to ask a question, they can put it in the chat and we will. Um, Sarah, the one question I had for you, the other question I had, could you give a little explanation about what funds from the choice accounts are being used for this year?
Yes. So, um, we have a, uh, a revolving account. We have money that comes in from the state for students that choose to come. For students that choose to come to Middleborough from other towns and it's called our school choice account. And in that, that money, those monies each year. Used to fund portions of some of the teacher salaries at the high school and at the middle school and. What we're doing for next year is committing money from the school choice account also for the um, the. I don't know the name of the job yet. I don't think it's been created, but the person who is going to work in the fab lab at the high school as well as. The salary of the groundskeeper for the district.
Mister Chair.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Mister Chair, could I just have a look from from Karen Lyons and she said, did say that uh, we do have an ASL American Sign Language interpreter. Um, and I provide a target PD on ASL through the Reed's Collaborative. And we also have, uh, Mr. Brandigan is working on elective next year for the high school for ASL, so um. There are things in the works. There are definitely programs in the works, but I do not believe we have a K through twelve curriculum. I know we don't have a K through twelve curriculum on ASL, so. Just some additional information.
Thank you, Brian. I appreciate it. Um, thank you, Sarah, too. I appreciate that. I think, you know, we've tried to use that. Uh, the vast majority of choice monies have come in through the high school, um, more than any other place. It was only recently that we opened it in other areas. Uh, and so we really tried to spend it in the high school, i- in those places. Um, to make sure that they um, they pick up extra things that we normally couldn't have. Um. The, any other questions? Um, th- there's another one in the chat that just came up, which is can we send some of those programs to students not in high school? Uh, so I think it goes back to Brian, maybe the program, I'm not really sure, but I think it has to do with the program that you were talking about, the elective, maybe to. Look at other, other places that it could go uh, for the sign languages, not necessarily opposed to just the high school.
Not sure if that individual wants to bring those forward uh, to me or to through Carolyn Lyons. We can certainly uh, or clarify that question. We can.
Yeah, I think, I think.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, um, with, does anyone else have any other questions? Then seeing none and seeing none in the chat, Sarah, I'm going to ask if you could put up that slide again and um, for the motion.
And go through it too fast.
No problem. And so the chair would entertain a motion to move as written on the slide.
So moved.
Second.
Do I hear a second discussion? Uh, hearing none, um, chair, go through a roll call vote, uh, Mr. Oakley.
Aye.
Ms. Farley.
Aye.
Mister Rowe.
Aye.
Mister Stevens.
Aye.
Ms. Janess.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Uh, the chair again would like to thank the uh, members of the subcommittee and the superintendent and the business manager. Um, the chair would also like to thank uh, the town manager, uh, because he's been very open and honest with us uh, from the very beginning about. Finances and letting us know and uh, keeping it up. So um, thank you for that and. Uh, unless anyone has anything further for the budget hearing, chair would entertain a motion to close the budget. Oh, go ahead, Brian.
Mister Chair, I just want to say that this, the next step with this budget after school committee approval this evening. Uh, it goes to the selectmen, it goes to the finance committee and then ultimately gets to the town, town meeting floor. So the school committee approves this budget and then it's approved uh, for further approval, basically at the town meeting level, so. I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
And and I would also let everyone know too that as of right now is just a number. Um, that number, uh, we are required at the end of the year to have a balanced budget going into next fiscal year. So for example, if something were to come up that we know about, Sarah would have to rework the budget. Um, and make it, make it fall in line, so. Um, and the past, we've had to change bit various pieces that we knew was going to happen, so. And we didn't find out about till later in the year, so we deal with that when it comes. Um, with that, uh, seeing no other information, the chair will entertain a motion to end the budget hearing.
So moved.
Or a second.
Second.
Requires a roll call vote. Mister Oakley.
Aye.
Ms. Farley.
Aye.
Ms. Janess.
Aye.
Mister Rowe.
Aye.
Uh, Mister Stevens.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye and we will re-enter the regular school committee meeting. And I believe at this point, we are at the superintendent's report, so I'll turn it over to you, Brian.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I'll continue with my discussion earlier, uh, and certainly answer any questions you might have, whether it pop up in the chat, certainly. Um, just sort of a recap of uh, two weeks or so ago, the the, the commissioner of education announced. Basically that that uh, transportation uh, requirements had been eased at at the elementary level fully. And at the middle school, two seat, two persons per bench, um, even in red communities. So that was one hurdle now that that is over, that they're stating that 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 those with windows cracked. Um, uh, that those buses do not transmit COVID. They have not found any transmission of COVID there. Um, they've moved on now to say that we'd like to see students back. It started with the governor two days ago. The commissioner two days ago, like to see students back in school uh, for April. No, not April first, but for April. Uh, Middleborough, on the other hand, has been planning for a while to get students back, especially at the early elementary level. And it looked like we'd be able, would be able to do that certainly with K one, two, possibly K one, two, three. That was our initial initial thought to get those students who are learning to read into school. Um, and that was a a thought that we were working on uh, until sort of this. Plan came from the governor and the uh, commissioner that said we'd like to see K through five or whatever your elementary is in some, some communities, it's K through six. Uh, or K through eight eventually in and then high school would be sort of a secondary, so, but especially elementary kids. Um, it's a much larger population. So the transportation piece, that hurdle is is, it's something we don't have to worry about. Anymore because we can now fit our students on the buses. Uh, we can get our students to school five days a week under those parameters. Now, we get students in school and the question is, do we have enough room in our elementary schools? To socially distant all of these kids and keep them safe, uh, faculty and students. Uh, we have agreed, i- i- the the guidance from Department of Elementary Secondary had had stated that a a minimum of of three feet. In Massachusetts uh, was acceptable, uh, and that is something that was accepted and in agreement with the Middlebury Education Association moving forward that we. Would respect that three foot distance um, from seat edge to seat edge. And so certain rooms were set up like that. A lot of rooms were set up with, that was a minimum distance. A lot of them were set up with four, five, six feet. Uh, we use double rooms. Uh, the problem is also that once students take the masks off. It becomes the required six feet. So when students take a mask break. Or when students go to lunch, which is in particular the biggest issue here. Because we can skip around mask breaks and people can go and take different mask break slots in a different, in a different day. But when they go to lunch, which is generally that two-hour period in the middle of the day, when we have to cycle all the students through lunch. When I'm talking about cycling, I'm talking about over five hundred students at the HBB, over five hundred students, the MKG. Um, uh, obviously two hundred and twenty students or so at the MEK. At the high school and the middle school, we're talking about eight hundred plus. So to get those students fed six feet apart is a real challenge. Um, at the high school, they've taken up the main lobby space and they've taken up the cafeteria space. Uh, and they feel that that might be adequate down the road for the high school, but we'd have to study that. Right now, we're focusing on the elementary and middle school. Um, at the elementary schools, we would lose uh, our gymnasiums. We'd lose our stage, we'd lose our, but we. We're looking at right now to see if it's possible to fit those kids in. Maybe expand lunches, maybe uh, basically move lunches a bit, add perhaps a lunch. So that's sort of brainstorming is going on now. That's the planning process that's going on now. Uh, the the second really important part of this is is talking with our teachers and our faculty. Like I said at the beginning, we've had faculty that have been in the building from day one. Uh, they've been in there with our special needs kids, our our art, music, phys ed, those folks have been in. Uh, five days a week. We have ESPs who are on five days a week. Obviously, we have cafeteria and administrative staff and custodial staff. Who are in five days a week and so far it's worked with the amount of kids that are currently in our building. Uh, obviously, conditions change when you bring all the students back in, so those are the conditions that we have to account for. Those are the things we have to look forward to. Especially with with faculty, uh, and students, obviously. I started with students and the faculty, obviously. Uh, and then we have to move on to sort of uh, traffic in buildings and making sure the traffic is is staggered. Uh, and students are trafficked accordingly with six feet distancing and such, especially when the masks are off, so. All of those things come into play here. Um, all those things have to be considered. We have to survey parents. That's the next piece. It would be the next. Big piece here is to survey parents to see what they want to do, because one of the things the governor has said, uh, and I actually, the commissioner has said. Uh, is that he plans to bring, he would like to bring all students back. Uh, but he also wants, and I quote from the, from the commissioner, parents will still have the option for their children to learn remotely through the end of this school year. So he's stating that he wants all students back, but this school district should also provide for remote learning for those parents that want to continue with remote learning. That is a plan in and of itself to try to account for that. It may mean hiring additional staff. It's certainly going to be mean hiring additional staff. At the elementary and middle schools with getting people in to help out, monitor recess and monitor lunch. Because lunch will be spread out uh, over so many more Pete feet, excuse me. And uh, so we're going to be hiring at that point. Uh, I know that people have volunteered in the past and I certainly appreciate that. Uh, but we're going to be looking for employees to come in and help with recess and cafeteria monitoring. Um, and they would become employees of the district for that period of time until we don't need them anymore, as long as they want to stay, certainly. Uh, but that would be an opportunity for some employment uh, down the road. Uh, we're not right necessarily looking for bus monitors right now, but down the road we may need to. Uh, but so far, I would say that with our bus transportation and our current mask wearing. We really have had very little issues with any of that right now. Um, very little discipline reports from buses, very few. Uh, and 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 so kids in these current socially distancing uh, parameters that we have have really worked out well. Uh, but now we're putting all of those students back together, um, and the potential for, you know. Additional circumstances that go beyond, just beyond so social distancing. Uh, so all of that taken in. Uh, I continue to work with administrative staff. We have another meeting tomorrow morning. We had a meeting yesterday morning. Um, we'll, and I want to say morning, I'm saying basically the morning, the entire morning. Um, and we're doing a lot of conversations, a lot of brainstorming, a lot of discussion about that survey that I mentioned earlier. Do we send out an interest survey first? And then send out something that says we need the numbers, or do we send out something initially that says, listen, we'd really like you, give you a week now. Uh, I'll send out an email. We'll give you a week, think about it and then be prepared to give us an answer so that then we can take that data. Because even with April, we're talking about, we're we're almost March right now. Uh, so we're talking about moving that. Let's say April fifth, we start Monday. Let's say, just in case, all of these things have to happen between now and then. Uh, we have to reorganize our schools. We have to, physically, we have to reorganize our schools. We have teachers that have moved all of their equipment all over the building to different places. All of it has to be moved back. So uh, if this becomes more of a situation where it solidifies here. And we're definitely going to be asked to do it and the mo- the Board of Education votes on it and the governor orders it. Uh, then we're in a position where we're saying, okay, this is a go and this is what we need to do. Uh, and that may mean coming to you and asking for a change perhaps, and and hear me out. Uh, in the school calendar for K through eight. Where we take those two professional development days that are designed for the high school on the Friday before school vacation in April and the Friday after. And move those for K through eight, so that the week before we enter fully, if we plan to enter fully. That we'd reestablish, we'd basically reestablish that week and say for the first three days, it's fully remote. And for the final two days prior to that Monday, the Thursday and Friday, those students would have, would have the day off. And we'd be able to get the teachers in for professional development to have them actually put their rooms together. Custodians would move the furniture. Then the teachers could set up their rooms to get going uh, and get really moving on this, so. There are a lot of considerations here. There are a lot of things that have to be accounted for. Obviously, students, teachers, families, physical buildings. Uh, and still have those parameters around social distancing that we still are required to do in our buildings. Uh, like I said, Teresa, at the beginning, you know, the question that comes up is, well, if so, then why couldn't we do this before? The the transportation was a real piece here and also this bit about the fact that. We'd like to continue to have some of those open spaces for kids to use, especially at the middle school. The gym is an important piece in in the, for for those adolescents to get in that gym and. And and run around and have phys ed classes, but we're getting into April, more of an opportunity to go outside, do some things outside. Perhaps rope off a section of the 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 parking lot. Uh, we also have the idea that we've been bounced around through through our committee about. Putting a large tent at each uh, school building so that we can have outdoor areas in case of rain for students to take mask breaks. And potentially recesses and things like that. So there's a lot in play here, a lot going on, uh, a lot that we'll continue to consider. Um, um, and I would certainly, I guess, take any questions at this point. Uh, I have quotations from the governor, I have quotations from the 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 commissioner, but I think you've heard them all. You're you're all on the school committee. You've all been aware of that. I wanted to say that for the, for the sake of those folks that might be tuned on, tuned in that weren't uh, in tune with what was going on in the news and in the media. Um, and uh, I would entertain any questions that you might have at this point.
I, Brian, I I I do have a question, but I just want to um, be clear about one piece, uh, which is. Whenever this happens, it still needs to be presented to the school committee as a plan and the school committee needs to vote to accept. So I I don't want people to think, you know, like you're going to send out a notice tomorrow that we're changing because it can't happen that way. The school committee has to approve it. Um, so the question I have, Brian, is. In the, in the going back to school slash um, remote, uh, because the governor is allowing remote pieces. Is hybrid off the table at that point?
Hybrid will be off the table. Uh, people will be either be in five days or will be remote. That's the only way we can swing this, that we cannot have three, three, basically. We would have an online academy. We would have the in-school, so we'd go from four, four cohorts, if you will, to s- to basically three. Um, we cannot have the hybrid. Uh, it's just simply physically impossible and financially absolutely impossible.
Okay. Uh, Mister Oakley, you had your hand up. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, this question is to Brian and um, uh, sorry, uh, Superintendent Lynch. Uh, I've been hearing from, from uh, from parents that, uh, you know, surrounding towns are bringing their kids back. And and my own personal research shows for Carver and Lakeville that that's not necessarily true. Um, I I looked at their websites and. Read their announcements and it doesn't sound like uh, um, anyone's uh, bringing back students in any great numbers besides the hybrid plans that they already have. But I guess the, just uh, addressing the the question without necessarily acknowledging that is, you know. Places that are bringing kids back, how are they different than us?
Well, I think what they're doing is is uh, Mister Oakley and through you, Mister Chair, is is they're, they're doing some of the things that we're going to do with sort of taking. Uh, large areas and making them cafeterias, taking a high school uh, lobby perhaps and making that a full cafeteria, taking a Nichols Middle School Gymnasium. And making that a cafeteria. Um, and and those, that would be some of the possibilities that we might have. We still have to vet that out. I know that Mrs. Latanda met with Garrett Perry, the head custodian at Nichols, and Jim Hutchinson, the facilities director. Uh, this afternoon for a couple hours and walked through the building with with measuring tapes and so that sort of, that sort of activity is going on now and has been going on. Um, you know, we we don't want to, uh, you know, we want to make sure that if we do this, it's it's doable. And that we can promise people that we're going to stay within the parameters that we've promised in that three-foot distancing in the classroom and that. Six-foot distancing at lunch and mask breaks and things such as that. We're going to ask the Department of Public Health, can we set up cafeteria tables with a plexiglass down the middle? Um, I feel the answer is going to be no to that because I believe it's been known in a number of other communities. Uh, so there are things and and there was a question in the chat. I I, it's sort of related, but it was an ask about. The the bus and the physical, the capacity limitations and physical distancing requirements on buses as opposed to classrooms. And what I believe has come out from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed is that the wind blowing through the bus. And the air flowing through the bus, the air circulation on the bus uh, is at a brisker pace than it is in a normal classroom. We have as a district provided uh, air purifiers with, in every single classroom. We're going to order, we've already ordered ninety more. Uh, I've just put in an order. Uh I've just put in an order for about six hundred more desks, uh which are absolutely necessary to make this happen. Um so these are costly items, but we're fortunate that we had an extension of the CARES Act and the CARES money in Plymouth County. So the CARES Act paid for a number of desks back last summer to make the hybrid work. And now we have to almost double that to make this full remote or full return, make that work, so. Those are some other, the other logistics that we're looking at is is spacing requirements and desks and and can we can we fit all these students? Do we do we need extra chairs and uh where do we store all the tables that were in the early childhood, so? You know, there are a lot of logistical issues that we worked out, fortunately, we have a a highly qualified facilities director who's who's great to work with and. And seems to have the answers before I have questions, which is great, so. Um you know, we'll continue to work with those things, but those are the some of those those details we continue to work on. Um and like I said, I I talked to the representative uh as soon as this went down Tuesday. Uh and knew this was an absolute inevitability for elementary and middle school. Uh that there was going to be a need for desks and uh so that order was placed already, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh Greg, I saw you had your hand up, go right ahead, Greg Rowe.
Thank you, and and I believe you just answered it, Mr. Lynch, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um so there are some material items, and I was asked, I was going to ask, did you order the desks already? Because we know what happened with the laptops, when everyone ordered laptops at the same time, I'm sure every school district in the. In the state's going to be ordering desks, so I'm glad to hear you got that in as soon as you could, so thank you for doing that.
I guess second place with Virco, because I called him, he says, oh, you're the second call, I says, I say, you probably anticipated a few more this morning.
Yep.
So.
So excellent, but um also besides materials, is there going to be a staff um increased cost, obviously? From from judging in the fall, volunteers were wiped off the soccer field, I'm sure they'd be wiped off. From schools is still with the restrictions, so we're, I'm assuming that with more students, you'll need more staff, especially with a hybrid option and missing staff in each grade. Um will that be covered by the CARES Act as well, or?
Yeah, that's that's Mr. Rowe, through you, Mr. Chair, that that is certainly our hope, Greg, that that we would be able to be in a position. Uh where things would be reimbursable through the CARES Act. Uh we are receiving additional funds uh through what's called an Escher Grant. Uh that will help uh accommodate this and and. Uh when I mentioned about, and I know a number of people in the chat, and I certainly appreciate the number of. Of of moms and dads who chimed in and said, we're willing to volunteer, we're willing to help, we're willing to do everything, anything. Um we'd need you to be employees, and I want to say that again, we'd need you to be employees, because we need you to be sort of come in, you're not, you're not volunteer, because we. We sort of can't have that, we need to make sure that you're a paid employee and come in. Um and assume that responsibility that we're going to need, we're going to need cafeteria recess monitors, we're going to need some hallway monitors, we're going to need. Basically, we need some help um to help with social distancing and and help work with parents and and help, excuse me, help work with teachers. And ESPs and and uh and work with these students to make this thing work.
Other questions, um I do have one in the chat, Brian, that I just want to go into. Um which is, uh and it goes, it's a bigger question for me too. Uh when kids are able to go back, will um after school help be available or tutors for kids that are struggling? And related to that, Brian, um I know the. The Commissioner has talked, and I I don't think we've heard it, about extending some classes through the summertime. That that people who are behind would be able to have that opportunity to catch up on.
Uh yeah, Mr. Chair, that the Commissioner has has made a couple of recommendations, they have not been approved by the board yet, but but in his conversation. With superintendents after his announcement. Uh yesterday, he mentioned the fact that that he is looking to put in grant programs for uh school systems that want to uh. Extend the school year into the summer and making summer programs available to districts, which I think is important. Uh he did mention the fact that if there were, if there were uh school departments that absolutely could not fit students in. Every school in every place, uh then they would not meet uh student learning time requirements. And they would be forced to extend the year uh and make some accommodations in the summer to account for lost time, so. Uh you know, there he touched on a number of things with regard to that, so. Um we would certainly, as a school district, be looking to have opportunities to extend the year. You know, we have extended school year program in the summer uh for students with special needs. Uh but this would be something that would be different, we'd try to probably design some type of a tutoring program. Um that parents could opt into, uh no promises right now, that's part of the, that's part of the process is. Excuse me, is receiving grants and applying for grants for those things, but hopefully we'd be able to do that, that's certainly intent of the district to pursue those. Opportunities.
Uh one, Teresa, go right ahead, then I'm going to ask.
Um so one of the questions that came up, and certainly it's a concern for myself as well. We do all this work, and we get these students back in, and the Board of Health and Department of Public Health don't change their. Quarantine guidelines within as far as contact tracing goes, we could be looking at revolving doors of. Kids who are quarantined, and that could be a larger impact on student learning, so my question would be. Do you plan or have you already started a conversation with Board of Health as to what is this going to look like? Because if they continue to to keep it the way it is now, we could be looking at a larger group of students to quarantine.
Yep, through you, Mr. Chair, uh Ms. Farley, the the, that is obviously a concern. Um and it's obviously a sort of a chance we take, really, is what comes down to it, and that's what the governor and the commissioner. There was some pushback on that from superintendents, I would guarantee you that. Um and but the 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 CDC makes those determinations in terms of guidelines, those aren't done locally. So that whole metric of of the the days out and the quarantine days out and the close contacts, those have not changed right now. Uh Teresa, those have not changed, and and we would still have to live within those parameters, we still have to have a room, a waiting room. Uh if a child provided it had was symptomatic, uh like we do now, uh those waiting rooms have not been used as much. Our numbers are significantly down, if you paid uh attention to the, you'll have new numbers in the in the uh in the dashboard tomorrow. And our numbers are going down in this community, as well as the schools, uh so that hopefully. Uh you know, we're going to be past this this major uh bump that we've been involved in and and move forward. Uh but all it takes is one, for example. Volleyball team started practicing this week uh in the afternoon on Monday, and there was a student symptomatic and a student uh positive, and. We had to do contact tracing and and basically had to quarantine a volleyball team. Um so those things are going to continue, we had to quarantine the hockey team. Uh week before last, we had to quarantine the basketball team a couple of weeks ago, so. So there are those that parameters that we still have to follow that are not going to go away. But with uh the practices of of masking and social distancing and keeping with those parameters. Uh what we're being told and what the what we're being explained to us is that. Uh right now, the metrics indicate that that it's not a school spreading event, we have not had school spreading events. And that we should be able to accommodate uh students back in, so uh we're going to go with, go with the experts.
Okay, thank you.
So Brian, next question uh up on the chat, is there still a plan to bring in the younger kids and those with greater needs sooner rather than later?
We're going to make those determinations based, I think, on the survey tha- that is sent out. Um and I think that what we're looking at, if we're looking at making a decision. We'd probably be looking at a wholesale decision where we have that week before, and we have a week of remote learning so that we can. Basically reconstruct our schoolrooms and our school, our classrooms and our our whole entire areas. Uh to accommodate for the entire population, so I think at this point, I'm not saying definitely. But at this point in the planning process, um we would basically be looking at at bringing all the elementary in at once.
Um Brian, will Champions be available for before and after school?
Champions will continue to be available for before and after school, yes.
Thank you, uh Greg, did you, Greg Rowe, did you have a question, Todd, I saw your hand up?
Thank you, I I just had a quick question uh through you, Mr. Chair, uh Mr. Lynch, have there been any. Outreach from high school, middle school, elementary school to reach those kids that are struggling now? Um in the past couple months, I I know that a lot of places have, and I'm sure you guys have, I'm just wondering if. You could share some anecdotes or programs that are put into place of helping those students that haven't been showing up on remote days. Or kids with excessive absences be as a close contacts.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe, through you, Mr. Chair, uh yes, we have concerted efforts at this point from building administration. And school adjustment counselors in each every, in each building to try to reach out, uh you know, we have child study teams in every building. Uh that make determinations and that bring students' names up, and and I know administration, I get the attendance in the morning. And I make calls to the to the administration, saying, are we checking on, have the students been out for a number of days and? And and how we checking on, and they're always on it, which is good. But we also have had an effort recently uh to coordinate our counselors, we haven't haven't. Done that in the past, where we have all of our counselors getting together to meet, and we've been able to do that this year. Uh and we're going to try to do that on recognizing the social emotional needs uh as a result of of COVID. That we're going to try to coordinate our efforts and possibly have some types of, some type of coordination, formal coordination of that effort. Uh Ms. Hickey and I talked about that earlier this evening, about possibly coming up with some type of a, one of our counselors sort of taking a lead role. And and working with the larger group of counselors coordinating their efforts, so there have been some some sort of silver linings here. Uh one of the grants that's coming out, part of the Escher Grant, requires that sort of mental health coordination. And uh we we're going to go ahead with that, no doubt.
Thank you.
Brian, uh there's a question about COVID pool testing for students and teachers. Can you talk a little about, I know we're not part of that group, can you talk to us about why?
We we're not part of that yet, uh because of the additional work that it requires and the additional personnel it would require to make it happen. Um we may reach out, uh because they're talking about sort of morphing that COVID pool testing just a little bit here. Uh to make it easier for schools to to make it work. Uh we do have a situation where at least our our Middleborough Fire Department is is testing any employee that wants to be tested. And we appreciate Middleborough Fire Department for doing that and working with our faculty on that, all of faculty member. Or staff member, or anyone that works in the middle public schools, or the town of Middleborough needs to do is make an appointment with the uh the fire chief. And uh and make it happen, so they, we do have testing there, but we have not participated in the pool testing yet. Um uh because at at the point where this came out, there was a real rush for it, and. We worked with a coordinator of nursing, we'll reevaluate that moving forward, there's no doubt about, no doubt about that.
Thank you, Brian, uh Mr. Rowe, again, go right ahead.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, in kind of regards to the testing, have there been any plans to get the teachers vaccinated by the town or by a source or? Go to a pharmacy, I know the vaccination rollout in the state has definitely been a roller coaster, to say the least. Um with different news every week, every day, um I'm just wondering if there's anything townwide to help the the town employees, especially the teachers.
Well, the first thing, Mr. Rowe, and through you, Mr. Chair, is is that uh it's it's a great question, and and it's an interesting, and I I do have the answer for you. Uh we're able to work with our Department of Public Health to acquire. Uh shots uh and vaccines for uh elderly housing right now. Uh and that's the one area that we've been able to get town vaccines for. Um and other than that, it was the first responders, and those were available through the fire chief through that first responder program, that first sort of. Really early tier, uh but right now, there are no plans to send wholesale groups of vaccines to towns for distribution. Uh we are on educators are on the schedule like everybody else, but I would tell you, there is definitely a push. Uh out there, uh legislatures are really pushing the governor uh to push teachers up, and if their expectation is to get students in. We really should have that sort of opportunity for teachers to get vaccinated uh sooner than later, uh and as soon as possible, quite frankly. Uh so I know that that's being worked on at the state level, I know that. Uh there was a, I would say there was an, I know there was an email out from the Mass Superintendent Association today. Uh asking us to call our legislators uh and let them know uh how much uh it means to us to get teachers and and educational personnel. In line, maybe sooner than others, but there are other people that that want to get in line too, and and we we understand that. But if the feeling is you want teachers in front of kids a hundred percent back back in full. Um you know, that those vaccinations are important, we realize that, there's no doubt about it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you, everybody, I appreciate it. Go ahead, Brian, do you have any other thing?
Uh there are no other questions with regard to that, and none in the chat, I don't know, uh. I don't see any more, really, uh.
I think we're all set right now, Brian.
All right. Um that would be it for for my report, and moving on to the high school building project, and I guess uh. Between you yourself and myself, the chair, and and those folks that were, I don't think Teresa was able to attend. And Rich Oakley were able to attend the walkthrough on Sunday, that's probably the most recent, and there was a nice article in the Gazette today, so.
And Megan too, and Megan too.
And Megan too, sorry, Megan.
So I'll open up, I'll open it up to you guys, because we usually get to talk about the building, so I'll let you have the opportunity. Since that was your first sort of walkthrough in a little bit, but Teresa, go right ahead.
Um well, I mean, my role was different a few years ago, where I was on the impact and part of that process. Getting parents involved in learning about the community forums, and then now my role as a community, as a school committee member, so. Certainly, um quite the the moment for me, without a doubt, uh it's absolutely beautiful, it is. Uh so well deserved for Paul and his staff and all these students, and I'm just, I could not be more proud of this town for getting behind it. And I just want to say thank you to everyone for that again, and um this this design is absolutely stunning, I'm I'm just, I was blown away.
And Megan, go right ahead.
Um so Mr. Oakley, I thank you, Mr. Chair, um Mr. Oakley and I kept saying as we were walking through, like. We wish this stuff was here when we graduated, and we didn't graduate that long ago, so um you know, we have a pretty. Good grasp, but just everything that's in there for our students is amazing. The auditorium, I'm I'm a theater person myself, and I run the theater program at my school, it's amazing. Um and just everything that goes along with it, so it was really nice to see everything, and I hadn't never been on a walkthrough, I wasn't able to go to the last one. So it it's just, it's beautiful, every aspect about the building is beautiful.
Mr. Oakley, go right ahead.
I'm really excited for the Fab Lab. I got a chance to go walk around, I'm just thinking about how exciting that's going to be of an opportunity, and I know, I know there's um. You know, a lot of planning left to do about how that will be integrated into um to existing classes and create extra opportunities, but. I think that's just going to be a fantastic space for our kids, and I'm so excited for that. And um also was just struck with the um uh just the quality of the the construction and the big open spaces and the. Collaboration stations um that that um I understand were were designed specifically to accommodate. Um students that were either walking up to it, um sitting at it, or uh in a wheelchair that were approaching it. Um whi- which was a really great thing to hear, um so it's just such an awesome space, it's so dynamic, and I think it's really going to encourage our kids to think dynamically too, and to think outside of the box. Um and and yeah, I remember saying to uh Mrs. Farley, I think it was, that uh if 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 I were in a a school like that growing up, I think my grades would have been better in high school. If it weren't for music theory, I think um, you know, I might might not have uh made it through high school as one of those programs that kind of saved me, but. Uh it's incredible place, so thanks for the opportunity.
Uh Brian, I see your hand up, and I always want to call on you to go right ahead.
It's, I was just going to say that I know that Mr. Oakley and and Mr. Young, and I'm not sure who might, I don't know if anybody else in the committee. Got a chance to go visit the New View High School uh near MIT in Cambridge, when we went to go visit that school. Uh and take a look at that Fab Lab that they had, and the Maker Space that they had, and how impressed we were, and this basically became. A model of that uh New View High School in Cambridge, uh which we saw it 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 work, really, with kids in it. Students in it, and the amazing things they were doing, uh all kinds of innovative things. Uh from plant experiments to three D configurations to uh colla- collaborative work with all kinds, I'm just amazing, so that we have high hopes. For that innovation space, there's no doubt about it, but thanks for bringing that up, Rich.
Any other um question, Mr. Oakley, go right ahead.
Sorry, um I I saw a question in chat, but it was also a question I had as well. Uh I think I overheard during the tour that there is a possibility for after the high school is open. To to possibly allow for tours of um of parents, but I understand that this is all kind of contingent on the existing. Um set of restrictions for um people in schools, so I just wanted to ask if there's a plan for, you know. In the future, when things are better, to allow parents to come in and walk around.
I mean, certainly, Mr. Brandigan is is working on on plans to, you know, it's hard when you have. it's hard when you have basically something this beautiful and, and not be able to share it with the people that are basically paying for it. So it is frustrating, um, but it is something that we do plan to do in the future. Uh, when things are relaxed, perhaps in the summer, uh, we'll be able to get some folks in there, uh, and, and have some tours of the building. I know that people are really disappointed about the current high school and our ability to bring people in and say goodbye to that school. Um, and we'll try to do something, but that's, it might be near impossible with regard to the fact that we still have students in there, and when the students move out, um, the demolition crews are moving in, so.
Thank you.
Um, any other questions about the the building itself? Seeing no one, before we move on, I just want to point out, somebody had made a comment that the superintendent didn't talk about the pool testing, and I know you did, Brian. We're not currently doing pool testing, uh, but we potentially could do it as we move forward because there may be other opportunities for us. So I just wanted to say that you did answer that question, uh, for people to know. Um, with that, the chair wants to entertain a motion to, um, approve the consent agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, um, only the consent agenda talks about fundraising, meeting minutes and approval warrants. Um, with that, Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Ms. Farley?
Aye.
Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so thank you. Um, does anyone have anything else before I ask to go into executive session? Seeing no one. Then the chair asks to move into executive session for procedure three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargain or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, I do so declare. And this will be about the, um, Teamsters Local 653 contract that we have. Um, with that, it requires, uh, do I hear a, a second?
A second.
Um, this requires a roll call, so Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Ms. Farley?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
And we will reconvene only to adjourn the meeting. So with that, I thank everyone for participating, we will have, um, updates as we go, our next meeting is March 11th. Um, thank you very much.